Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. The 726th regular meeting of the Yosemite Community College District on Wednesday, September 10th at about 3:01. We're not going to have a Zoom thing, so we'll move right on to the open session. Okay.
I think for the record, if you read that statement on page one, just in case in the future during reconvening to open session.
Okay. Zoom meeting access will be provided to the public only if remote attendance by trustee under AB 2449 is approved by the board and item 2.3 or item 4.4 of this agenda. I'm already screwing up and it's been like two minutes. That's not so great. Could you please call roll?
Trustee, for the record, the student trustee will be a little bit delayed, I think, when we reconvene. Trustee Aguilar is making his way. Trustee Beggs is going to be absent, so that's for the record. Trustee Davis?
Present.
Trustee Garrett?
Present.
Trustee or Vice President Nicolau?
Present.
And Board President Richards?
Present.
Forum is established.
Great, so we're not going to have to deal with 2.3. We'll move on to 2.4. Do we have any statements of conflict? Okay, moving on. 2.5, public comment. I see a lot of people here. We welcome you. Trying to read every sign. We're going to let you have speak. We ask that you spill out speaker cards. You're allowed four minutes. I'd like you to keep it to four minutes. So could I have the first card?
Rosalinda Viera.
Good afternoon.
So, I don't want to be nasty, but it'd be better if you didn't clap because we have a lot of people and a lot of time and maybe we could just clap at the end, but I can't tell you what to do, but that'll make it easier for us. So please, welcome.
No problem, thank you. And I understand as an elected myself, but I'm here as someone who's been employed here, an MJC graduate, a parent of an MJC graduate, and a certified success specialist here at Modesto Junior College. I started here in 2013, working with students, and I continue to work here full-time, year round, on a face-to-face basis with my students. I do not work remote, I do not work hybrid. I work directly face-to-face with the students and I love it. I'm here as when they need me, they know I'm one phone call away. Unfortunately, I can't make tonight's meeting because I also volunteer in the community and I sit on the Souths County Homeless Alliance, where I work on ways of eliminating-
Here, you're here.
I'm here, but tonight at 5:00, when I get off work, I have my other job, so to say, working on strategies to address homelessness and homeless insecurities, including with our students, and steps we can do to address the homeless insecurities we have here on campus. When I started my journey, like I said, in 2013, as an alum and a parent, this college holds a very special place to me in my heart. It's a place I take pride to, it's a place where I work directly with students, even with a master's degree and now working on my second. I have no desire to do anything different than what I do every single day. And over the last 12 years of service, I no longer get step increases. I rely on the COLA, that's all I have every year. And each year as minimum wage goes up, I go a lot closer to minimum wage as it comes creeping closer and closer to the amount of my paycheck, especially with McDonald's and I'm starting out at $20 an hour. My wages with a master's degree are not too much higher than that. But we continue to work without a contract, especially with our contract having the Me Too clause, I was disappointed to see that it was not honored and negotiations just seemed almost to reach an impasse. And that affects me, especially as an elected myself, I deal with an entire city and having to negotiate various contracts. So I know the importance of trying to maintain morale and esteem and want our employees coming to work every day. Now, I enjoy exactly what I do. I enjoy watching the students go from application to graduation and crying as they cross the graduation line and transfer on. But the good thing is they always come back to visit me, call me, text me, find me online. Classified professionals, we're here year-round. You don't see us taking time off. We enjoy being here. I love my 410s, please don't get me wrong. But I work side-by-side with administration, faculty, and even my coworkers that you see many behind me, some that were not able to be here. We're essential when it comes to working with the face-to-face services that our students rely on and to keep this institution running. We deserve fairness, just like our students do. We deserve equity and we deserve dignity. But I urge you to honor our agreement and recognize the essential role that us classified professionals play in keeping MJC the community leader in higher education than it is today. Thank you.
Thank you.[1085.42][1085.42](applause) That's okay. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please.
Patrick Krebs.
I will give you a little more time, so go ahead.
Thank you. Mine's a little bit longer and I have asked others if I needed to donate my time. So, good evening, good afternoon, President Richards, interim chancellor Tran, and board members. My name is Patrick Krebs and I'm speaking on behalf of myself and on behalf of my CCA chapter as an immediate past president. An opportunity to honor your commitments. The YFA recently received an 8.709% salary increase. Our collective bargaining agreement contains a Me Too clause, ensuring equivalent treatment for all bargaining units. You have an opportunity here to honor that contractual commitment and demonstrate that this district keeps its word. The means to do what's right. The district's financial stewardship has been exceptional, creating the capacity to treat employees fairly. You have seen these datas and some of these bullet points that we shared with you just last night. Seventy-seven point nine million more accumulated in reserves than originally budgeted over five years. Average annual surplus of 12.2 million over the last five years. Current reserves of 56.9 million, a 72% increase since 2020. The cost of honoring our contractual agreement, $3.1 million annually, represents only 25% of your average annual surplus. You have the means to do the right thing. A system in crisis that needs your leadership. Your salary schedule needs your attention. Our salary schedule needs your attention. Ranges 1 through 16 are no longer valid due to the minimum wage increases. They've been stricken. That's the lowest it goes, is the range 17. All classified positions are now artificially compressed into fewer, higher ranges. This eliminates career advancement pathways and destroys wage progression. Without action, continuing minimum wage increases will further destabilize our compensation structure. We have been systematically underfunded by 6.32% compared to state COLA allocations while faculty receive nearly full funding. Many employees now face financial challenges that affect their ability to serve effectively. An appeal to your leadership. You have an opportunity to demonstrate the values this institution represents. Institutional integrity by honoring contractual obligations. Fairness by providing equivalent treatment to all employee groups. Community leadership by ensuring those who serve students can thrive. Our request, we respectfully ask you to give your negotiation team the authority to resolve this wage disparity. This is your chance to show that what the Yosemite Community College District is an institution that honors its commitments and values, the people who make student success possible. We remain committed to excellence in serving our committee and trust in your leadership to do what's right. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Jacqueline Woodnatt.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. So I am reading this statement on behalf of another classified member that was not able to be here today. At our classified employee breakfast last month, Chancellor Tran spoke to us all in what was supposed to be a statement of encouragement and recognition. Instead, me and my colleagues were left feeling openly insulted as Chancellor Tran implied that when she was a classified employee, she was too good for the position because she possessed an MBA. She implied that the work we do was and is beneath her, to be used only as a stepping stone for greater things. I, my, oh, excuse me. I love my work as a classified employee and I don't believe that any amount of education or certification would make me too good for this job. We are the backbone of this college and the ones who interface directly with the students, the people whom this institution exists to serve and uplift. This is the most fulfilling job I have ever had, and that is because I get to see MJC's incredible students every day and hear how their classes are going and talk to them about their lives and their goals, and because I get to be a part of their unique stories through one-on-one interaction. Here in my lowly classified position, I am a gear in the beautiful machine that is MJC, which is itself a gear in the beautiful machine that is Modesto, which is itself a gear in the beautiful machine that is California, and so on. We classified staff don't need to be at the top looking down on those who empower us. We are happy, we are blessed to be one essential part of the world. It is no surprise to me that someone who thinks of classified staff as lowly, who callously refers to staff as range 28, as poverty level, was not popular with her staff at Columbia. It is surprising to me that she would show no humility in getting a second chance to prove herself as our chancellor. I believe that Chancellor Tran holds these views because they make her feel justified in paying us as little as she can get away with. After all, we are just lowly classified staff who should all be striving for something greater. But when we are all at the top, being paid well in our executive positions, who will run our school? Who will guide our students? Who will plan our conferences? Isn't a healthier college the one where our classified staff, the spine that upholds the body, the rib cage that protects the heart, that is our students, make enough money that they want to keep their job rather than climb a ladder so high that they've lost sight of what happens at the bottom? I think it is, and I think that you do too, even you won't say it aloud. So say with your signature, if not your words, that we are classified staff, we deserve to be paid for the work we do and for the students, for all of us. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please.
Lisa Shet.
Welcome.
Good afternoon. President Richards, trustees, Dr. Tran. Last month, my public comment included the opportunity for my fellow classified professionals to introduce themselves to you. Twenty-six people came forward and proudly shared their position and/or department along with the number of years they've worked for YCCD. The total number of years served for those 26 individuals came in at 349. Twenty-six people, 349 years, is an average of 13.42 years per person. I think this exemplifies the fact that classified professionals are a dedicated bunch who are committed to supporting students and this institution. I am pleased that many classified professionals continue to attend the board meetings. Their presence is a valuable opportunity for you to see us and learn of the roles that we play that are so important to the daily operations and success of Columbia College, Modesto Junior College, and Central Services. I'd like to personally thank them for being here today and for their dedication to Yosemite Community College District. As a part of my public comment time, I'd like to provide the same opportunity now for anyone that has not yet introduced themselves to the board, and I hope your shoulder's feeling much better. Fellow classified members, if you have not introduced yourself to the board, please come up and share your name, department, and number of years that you have worked for YCCD. And I will start with introducing Scotty Gonzer. Scotty is here every meeting, facilitating the video equipment and making sure that this is a successful board meeting. He works in media services and he has been here for 17 years, since he is not able to come up and share himself. Anyone that is interested that was not here last time?
Valerie Parker, I'm one of the health services nurses. I work in student services. I am not faculty, many people get that confused. I have been here for 19 years.
Welcome.
My name is Mark Meredith. I work in shipping-receiving. I worked here for 14 years.
My name is Sherry Garcia. I work here on West Campus in admissions and records. I'm a specialist and I've been here for 18 proud years and I was here for five years as a student worker.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Anaya Costa. I am a student success specialist. I've been at MJC for three years and I was a student worker myself for three years as well.
Rosalinda Viera, student success specialist. I also have a master's degree. I've been here since 2013, working with students. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Bridgette James. I've been at MJC for nine years. I'm a system specialist. I work in enrollment services and I'm teaching my boys stand up.
Who is that with you?
What's there?
Welcome.
Thank you so much for your time.
Please.
Hello, I'm Susan Manning Torres. I work in administration, in the admissions and records office as an evaluator, admissions, excuse me, administrative, as an evaluator, and I've been here since 2015, so just completed my 10 years.
It's okay. Please, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Kimberly Diaz. I also work in admissions and records.
I also work in admissions and records as an evaluator. I've been here for nine years.
Hello. My name is April Palmer. I'm a student success specialist at MJC. I've been here for about a year and a half, but I have ten years of experience with higher education.
I'm Matt Page. I work in the chemistry department in the stockroom. I've been working here for thirteen years. Before that, I was a tutor in the math, for math. And my parents both worked here, my dad for forty-two years and my mom in the president's office for fifteen years. And, you know, it's, it's a family thing. We love MJC and we just want to be treated right.
Glad to have you here. Next speaker.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jesse Reyes and I'm in carpentry. I've been here for about four years.
Okay. Lisa, I hope you're gonna wrap up.
Thank you for that opportunity and letting us extend the time.
Our pleasure. Next speaker.
I didn't say before that I am a proud graduate of MJC's nursing program and of Stanislaus State. I finished here in 1995.
Excellent.
I'm reading on behalf of Ann Miller. Pennies, that's the word that echoed at the classified retreat. Someone recalled their time as a classified employee and stated, "I was in range twenty-seven. I was making pennies." Nearly one in six YCCD ranges still fall at or below that category. Let's look at the facts. MIT's living wage calculator says a single adult with no children needs $28.72 an hour, $50,000 a year just to scrape by. That's range thirty-four. But YCC, YCCD isn't full of single people living alone. We are mothers, fathers, grandparents, caretakers, people with lives that stretch beyond the walls of this college. So let's look at reality. Two adults, two children, each adult needs $34.55 an hour, over $123,000 a year combined. That's range forty-one. Only one in seven ranges still hit that number and far fewer positions are actually placed there. At a recent event where a classified experience was being talked about, many heard, "I had a master's degree. Why am I not doing better, doing more?" Many of us have degrees too. The difference is that many of us choose to stay because we have the passion to help students at the foundational level. That's where our pride is. But the message we keep getting through pejoratives, through low-ball counteroffers is clear. Unless we hold the title of faculty, our work doesn't matter. This is not staff versus faculty. This is about being seen, being valued, being paid a wage that respects the fact that we are the first and last people students encounter. As we are often told during Institute Week, the ones keeping them enrolled and the ones keeping them on the track to UC and CSU, CSU, or a career. So when you praise us in speeches but offer pennies in practice, you're telling us, you really think, you're telling us who you really think we are. Undercut, undervalued, underpaid, underpaid. I urge this board to match the words with action. Value classified not just with thanks, but with wages that reflect the quality of work we provide and the number of students we serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. The following letter is from Janie Warren, who is our senior campus safety administrative processor and has worked for MJC for twelve years. Good afternoon. The classified staff is the heart of this district. At the August breakfast and in many other forums, we have heard the chancellors, deans, and other leaders express this truth. The district could not be as successful as it is without us. Yet right now, your actions do not reflect those words. The decision to sign documents granting YFA a raise months before its effective date, thereby avoiding the Me Too clause in the CSA contract sends a clear message. This choice appears intentional and disrespectful, especially since leadership knew of the clause as early as August and passed the budget in June when the clause was still valid. To then schedule the increase to begin after July 1st, when the clause no longer applied, looks like a deliberate effort to exclude classified staff from equal treatment. Removing the Me Too clause now only deepens the sense of distrust. The intent of that agreement was simple, fairness. To deny its spirit and its promise is to disregard the dedication, loyalty, and countless hours that classified staff pour into serving students, colleagues, and the broader community. For my part, I cannot place my trust in leadership that acts in this way. If the board chooses not to honor the agreement, then you show us that your words of respect are empty. Classified staff are voters as well as employees, and trust once broken is not easily restored. I urge you to do what's right, honor the agreement, uphold the intent of the Me Too clause, and demonstrate that your words about valuing classified staff match your actions. Respectfully, Janie Warren.
Thank you. Next speaker. Is there anyone that didn't fill out a card that'd like to speak? Okay, I'll close the public comment. Thank you all for coming. We have a closed session. Madam Synographer.
The board will adjourn to closed session to discuss items one point, or three point one through three point five listed in the September tenth regular meeting closed session agenda. Their time of adjournment is 3:29.
Thank you.[1074.65]
the Assembly of Community College Board of Trustees. Darren, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item 4.3, could we have roll call, please?
Student trustee Gutierrez.
Here.
Trustee Aguillache.
Here.
For the record, trustee Bledges is absent today. Trustee Davis.
Present.
Trustee Garrett.
Present.
For the record, trustee Hinton is not participating today. Vice President Nicolau.
Present.
And Board President Richards.
Here.
Home is established.
Great. We will not have to deal with 4.4. We do not have a report out of closed session, 4.5. Do I have any statements of conflict? Seeing any. Okay, before we get to public comment, I've had a request from the union president for a, what I will call a parade. So let's do that first. Sabina? Where is it? Let's go ahead and do what you asked me for right now. The parade of signs.
This is as part of the...
Open, this is public, I'm sorry, I'm opening the public comment.
Okay. So basically, I mean, I could say many things about their needs and what they want to ask for. Many, I mean, the majority of employees are, what else, working here or having to work at second jobs to be able to make mid-end. But, I mean, you've been already hearing all their reports every night for the last few months, and you're in, you know, the state of financial state, how they are, you know, struggling. And I would like them to walk through.
Please. Go ahead.
Thank you, sir.
Go ahead.
Are we deciding, start working with?
Please stand up and introduce yourself, please.
Introduce yourself.
Just, please, we're going to try to do this as early as possible. We don't want to have a repetition. I want to be fair. Just say your name and walk on by. And no applause, please.
Ateo Overstreet.
Natasha Jackson.
Barbara Bond, 20 years.
Randy Supnet.
Frances Herron.
Lydia Gaines.
Chad Nikolari Singh.
Leah Fonseca.
Joshua Signe, I've been here 14 years. Thank you.
Eddie Martinez.
Victoria Heiser.
Show your sign. We didn't see your sign. Thank you.
Hello, Carla Lopez, four years.
Thank you.
Shannon Tool, five years.
See a few more people coming in. Okay, do you have anything you want to say other than hold up your sign? Thank you.
I want to say thank you, appreciate the time and the willingness to.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, now we'll get back to public comment. I encourage people to stay to four minutes, be respectful. And Madam Stenographer, please go through the cards.
Lisa Shutt.
Good evening. My last two public comments have included the opportunity for my fellow classified professionals to introduce themselves. So far, 38 people have proudly shared their position and/or department along with their years of service. Those 38 individuals have worked a combined total of 478 years for YCCD. Yes, 38 people have accumulated 478 years of service. Not to mention the number of years many have contributed as student or contract employees as well. This is a clear example of the dedication that classified professionals bring to their work every day. We are committed to supporting Columbia and MJC students, this district, and our communities. If anyone here has not yet introduced themselves to the board, I'd like to invite you to do so now. Please come up and share your name, position, or department and number of years you have worked for YCCD.
Please, come on up.
My name is Frances Herron. I work in the photography department. I run the photo lab, and I have three years here.
Thank you.
My name is Rita Perez. I work in community lifelong learning as a specialist. I have 31 years working for the district.
Thank you.
My name is Denell Oliver. I work in the enrollment services department, and I just started year 21.
Thank you.
My name is Joshua Signe. I'm MJC's web developer. I also serve on the college technology committee, and I serve on the online education committee, and in my free time, I serve as a club advisor.
Thank you.
Elaine Thornton, financial aid department. Been here 21 years.
Thank you.
My name is Rosa Machado, and I'm a custodian, and I've been here for 18 and a half years.
Thank you. Anything else, Lisa?
No, I just want to say again, thank you very much, and I will combine those years and share that with you next month.
Very good.
Thank you.
Madam Stenographer?
Jacqueline Winnett.
Winjet. 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 Thank you for the phonetics spelling.
Hello, everyone. I'm back in with another letter.
Could you please tell us who you're reading it on behalf of?
My name is Jacqueline Winjet.
Okay.
Hello, distinguished YCCD.
Is this a letter from you, or are you reading it for somebody?
No, it's another letter from another class.
Okay. Who is the person you're reading it from?
It's from Melissa Clark.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, distinguished YCCD board and chancellor, Dr. Tran. My name is Melissa Clark, scholarship specialist for the MJC Foundation office. It has been my privilege to serve our community of MJC students and outside supporters and donors for almost 27 years. I am proud of our college and the difference we make in the lives of our students who choose our institution of higher learning. And I am immensely proud of the work that we do, all of us, faculty, admin, and classified. Very proud. We do make a difference. Just ask a student who has been helped by a caring individual who feels appreciated by their employer. In all the years of working for YCCD, MJC, never have I been made to feel that my job was not as important or valued as someone else's job. Yet, here we are, in a moment of time where I and many of our classified members of the CSCE number, chapter 420, are made, are being made to feel less than and certainly not valued. As in public knowledge, faculty has been granted a significant increase in salary, and for them, I am happy. However, with that said, I am astonished at the disparity of what classified employees are being offered. It's hurtful and speaks volumes of the low value being placed on all CSCE chapter 420 members. Dear board members, Dr. Tran, it takes more than wheels to drive the bus. Dear Board members, Dr. Tran, it takes more than wheels to drive the bus. If the engine isn't taken care of, no oil change, tune-up, tires, and so on, it's not going to run very well. Yes, you can put cheap parts, oil, and gas, but how long will it take before it ends up in a heap with a mound of problems? If you will, please, take a moment to think back to when you were a student. Did you have interactions with anyone other than faculty members that gave you the help that you needed? When you stepped on campus, was it clean? Was it safe? The moment a student calls or steps foot on our campus, we are on duty. Everyone, whether assisting with registration, applying and completing the process for financial aid, preparing food so a hungry student can eat, or offering a clean restroom, or a place to sit and study in the shade of a trimmed tree on the freshly cut grass, it all matters and is done by classified employees who perform their jobs with commitment and pride. Most of it, media services, is classified, oh, sorry, most of IT, media services is classified. The college runs because of technology, the list of classified importance is endless. In closing, I leave you with one of the best lines from the movie, Remember the Titans, attitude reflects leadership. You are the leaders who have the ability to do what is right and fair for classified staff, and I trust that you will. Thank you, Melissa.
Before the next speaker, I skipped over 4.7, there will be a change in order of business, item 6.4 will be pulled from, from discussions for further discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Patrick Krebs.
Good evening, President Richards, interim Chancellor Tran, and fellow board members. My name is Patrick Krebs, I'm speaking on behalf of CSEA chapter 420 classified employees who serve our students with dedication every day. An opportunity to honor your commitments, the YFA recently received an 8.709% salary increase, passed in June of 2025, 2026 tentative budget in June, before our, before our contract expired. Today, you are voting on a final budget that also includes an 8.709% increase in the district budget for YFA. You are holding to their agreement, but the district's choosing not to hold to your promise and commitment to the contract for classified members. As you know, CSEA's collective bargaining agreement contains a need-to clause, ensuring equivalent treatment for all bargaining units. I'd like to remind you that this language was proposed originally over two years ago by the district's lead negotiator at the time. CSEA accepted this language based on the spirit and understanding that it was meant to be a way that CSEA would receive equal treatment by the district when it came to wages. My understanding was that this language also allowed the time for the district to prepare for the wage increases that had been negotiated. It was a part of a planning tool, but also a way to bring equity to the bargaining units. It was shocking when earlier this summer, it was shared that the district didn't feel they needed to honor the contract. You have an opportunity here to honor that contractual commitment and demonstrate that this district keeps its word, the means to do what's right. The district's financial stewardship has been exceptional, creating the capacity to treat employees fairly. 77.9 million more accumulated in reserves than originally budgeted over five years, average annual surplus of 12.2 million over the last five years, and current reserves of $56.9 million, a 72% increase since 2020. The cost of honoring our contract agreement, 3.1 annually, 3.1 million annually, represents only 25% of your average annual surplus. You have the means to do the right thing. A system in crisis that needs your leadership. The district's classified salary schedule needs your attention. Ranges 1 through 16 are no longer valid due to the minimum wage increases, that means it's below the minimum wage. All classified positions are now artificially compressed into fewer higher ranges. This eliminates career advancement pathways and destroys, destroys wage progression. Without action, continuing minimum wage increases will further destabilize our compensation structure. Our wages have been systemically underfunded by 6.32% compared to state COLA allocations that the district has received, when faculty received nearly the full funding. Many employees now face financial challenges that affect their ability to serve effectively. Many classified here have second and third jobs. An appeal to your leadership, you have the opportunity to demonstrate the values this institution represents, institutional integrity by honoring contractual obligations, fairness by providing equivalent treatment to all employee groups, community leadership by ensuring those who serve students can thrive. Please remember that the student's success is a team effort, we need leaders like you, we need leaders and faculty in the classroom, and the students need classified. They need us all, they deserve the best of all of us. How can the district...
I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up, please.
I will, I've got just barely a paragraph.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate that. How can this district be the best that it can be and provide the best service and education without showing all of its employees respect, fairness, and equity when its classified members are struggling, and how and have shared they are struggling with you over the last few months, and it has so far fallen on deaf ears? Our request, we respectfully ask you to give your negotiation team the authority to resolve this wage disparity, this is your chance to show YCCD as an institution that honors its commitments and values the people who make student success possible. We remain committed to excellence in serving our community and trust in your leadership to do what's right.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Valerie Parker.
I'm going to ask the audience, once again, refrain from applause, because we do have a lot of people, and we want to get through it, so please no applause, we know how you feel.
I'll show you this now.
Thank you.
I'm Valerie Parker, one of the health services nurses, I work in student services, I'm a registered nurse, 19 years here, graduate of MJC and Stonetown State, I finished here in 95, as I mentioned earlier. I've been asked to speak on behalf of Ian Miller, again, pennies, that's the word that echoed at the classified retreat.
You, you already made this, these comments at the last board meeting, so I'd like to ask you to move on, you read this letter at the, at the pre-session.
Okay, I was just asked to...
Please, you, you did that earlier, so please continue with whatever else you have to say.
That was all I was asked to do, so.
Thank you.
I was asked.
Thank you.
Okay. Some people didn't hear it, though.
Okay, go ahead, I'll let you read, I'll let you read it.
Okay. Pennies, that's the word that echoed at the classified retreat, as someone recalled their time as a classified employee and stated, "I was in range 27, I was making pennies." Nearly 1 in 6 YCCD ranges still fall at or below that category. Let's look at the facts. MIT's living wage calculator says a single adult with no children needs $28.72 an hour, $50,000 a year, just to scrape by, that's range 34. But YCCD isn't full of single people living alone, we are mothers, fathers, grandparents, caretakers, people with lives that stretch beyond the walls of this college. So let's, let's look at reality, two adults, two kids, each adult needs $34.55 an hour, over $123,000 a year combined, that's range 41. Only 1 in 7 ranges hit that number, and far fewer positions are actually placed there. At a recent event where classified experience was being talked about, many heard, "I had a master's degree, why am I not doing better, doing more?" Many of us have degrees too, the difference is that many of us choose to stay because we have the passion to help students at the fundamental level, that's where our pride is, but the message we keep getting through pejoratives, through low-ball counteroffers is clear, unless we hold the title of faculty, our work doesn't matter. This is not staff versus faculty, this is about being seen, being valued, being paid a wage that respects the fact that we are the first and last people students encounter. As we are often told during institute week, the ones keeping them in role, the ones keeping them on the track to UC and CSU, or a career. So when you praise us in speeches but offer pennies in practice, you are telling us who you really think we are, undercut, undervalued, underpaid. I urge this board to match words with action, value classified not just with thanks, but with wages that reflect the quality of work we provide and the number of students we serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Please, I'm, I'm not going to ask again, no applause, I'm not going to, I'm not going to ask again, no applause, we're going to, we're going to keep this civil.
No more public comments.
More speakers? Anyone that didn't get to speak that would like to come up and talk? Okay, I'm going to close the public comment. Okay, now we're going to move on to the consent agenda, and before I do that, I'm going to do this right. Trustee Garrett, you want to talk about some retirements?
Pardon me, we have one, Maria Luisa Adams, 21 years of service, library specialist, library, Columbia College. I'm sure in Maria's time, she has helped countless students find the resources they need at the library, and helping them with their higher education goals, and, and we want to applaud Maria for her years of service with Columbia College and the district, and wish her well in retirement, thank you.
I also want to point out that someone that gave 25 years of his life to this board, his daughter-in-law, through an open search, legitimate search, Daniel Rojas will be joining us, so pretty excited about that. Okay, did anyone want to pull anything from the consent agenda? Anyone, members of the public? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
They're moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Student trustee?
Aye.
Please call the roll, or no, I guess we just say, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It passes. Okay, moving on to 6.1, you're on, and as I always do, I will caution you from reading slides, just give us a summary, please, I know you have a lot to talk about.
Luckily, there's not too many words on those slides.
By the way, I screwed up, I didn't, did I pass the personnel, I didn't, did I? Oh, that was in consent, okay, then I'm good, okay, thank you. I'm just trying to throw you off, Trevor.
Is that me doing that, or was that you doing that? Okay, well, go ahead. I, I will make this brief and go through the slides and the numbers as quickly as possible. So we did meet with the Board Finance Committee earlier this week, we talked about this in detail, and so if there are any questions from the board as we go through this, I'd be happy to answer. So if we go on to the next slide, there has been discussion about how our reserves end up higher. Normally, it's due to under-expending, meaning that we have, over the years, been trying to be as efficient as possible, holding on to vacancies where possible. But it's interesting, this year, we had, during the 24-25 fiscal year, we actually had a big change in our revenue from the final budget to the unaudited actuals, and a large part of that was due to the governor's 25-26 budget, which was just signed into law, that provided us more growth for the 24-25 fiscal year. So we had been concerned about having unfunded FTEs, and with the 25-26 statewide budget, we're actually able to capture a lot of additional FTS. The other reason why that revenue is higher than budgeted under apportionment is we are conservative as it relates to a deficit factor. We're aware that the state budget has been in flux, and we had estimated a 2.5% deficit factor. When the year was completed, that ended up being zero. So why, why would you estimate 2.5, and yet it ends up at zero? All the way through, even at P2, we were told by the chancellor's office that the deficit factor could be as high as 5, 6, 7%. So the state budget is volatile, we are not like K-12, we are not guaranteed appropriations, if the state does run out of money, they will do a mid-year cut on us. So the good news is, those dollars are now available to us as reserves, and also will help with our base budget in '26, '27. If we move to the next slide, we see our expenditures, and again, as noted on the page before, our budgeted expenditures, nearly 164 million, and they came in at 154 million. This is due to vacancies, this is due to each site not spending all of the budget allocated to them. And the reason why this is happening is because we don't sweep the reserves and take them from them, we allow a carryover at each of the sites, and so it's a way of not blowing through our money, but to save it for an appropriate time. So each site does have the ability to save some of their budget, utilize it in a future year for a project that they may be looking at. If we go to the next slide, we will see that we had anticipated, and if you would have recollect last year, I told you, fund balance projected to go down 13.59, and I essentially guarantee you that won't be the case, and here we are with exactly that, where we are actually adding to our fund balance. So if we go to the next slide, I won't read from this slide, because I've essentially said all those things. The, the thing to highlight, of course, is we are doing so much better with our FTS. Each of the colleges have done so well to improve FTS, but we're also improving student success, as well as the supplemental counts, each of those items assisting us in growing our revenue. And if we go to the next slide, and go ahead and skip this slide, so for '25, '26, we are presenting to the board a total revenue of 167.6 million. We have lowered that deficit factor from 2.5 down to 2. We have also increased our interest income amount, which is something that we're achieving more interest income than we've budgeted for. And if we go on to the next slide, we can see where our ongoing expenditures are. So we are projecting ongoing expenditures of 167.4 million dollars. You can see the breakdown of increases that are being attributed to salary and benefit. You can see that there is line number nine and line number 12 are some new growth dollars and additional allocation to MJC. Over the years, we've been intentional of making sure that MJC has more money available to them, as, based on our calculations, one site has been underfunded and the other sites have essentially achieved more of a fair share over the years. And so we continue to be intentional on making sure that resources are making their way to MJC. And on to the next slide, we do project a lot of one-time expenditures, and line number 15, you do see the site-specific reserve, these are the reserves available essentially to each of the sites. It is possible that not all sites will spend all of their reserve dollars, so this amount might be under-expended. We are asking the board to approve an $8 million allocation to Fund 41, and these are to, like we've discussed in prior years, to assist with those emergent facilities' needs. During Board Finance, we did go over a list that already exceeded that $8 million in need, and we have more need obviously beyond that. There is an additional site allocation to MJC to, again, to continue to make that concerted effort of providing funds to the larger college. We go on to the next slide, we will, looking at row number two and row number three, so total ongoing revenue of 167.6, total ongoing expenditures of 167.4, so we are presenting to you a balanced budget. Those one-time expenditures will help us decrease our fund balance, again... Again, a lot of those will happen, but not necessarily all of our expenditures will occur. So although we're projecting a decline in fund balance of $20.6 million, it is likely we'll end up somewhere above $40 million as we get to the end of the year. And next slide, please. So we do meet the board policy of the minimum of two months of expenditures. We're slightly above that. We do expect to have continued efficiencies at all sites. We are fiscally conservative, and we know in this district that there have been some very difficult budget times. And I think that continuing to maintain a solid reserve is important for the future. And with that, I will go over to any questions the board may have.
Any member of the public wishing to speak about the budget? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Questions from the board?
Well, as the vice chancellor pointed out, we did discuss this in more detail at the Board Finance Committee meeting on Monday. And we discussed a lot of issues. As you see there, Fund 41, which is for maintenance and facilities. You know, since, it's worth pointing out that since we last did a real in-depth analysis of what we call our short-term and long-term facility needs are at both of our college campuses, we were sitting at about $150 million, give or take. It's now because of inflation, our short-term and long-term facility needs have doubled. Measure E dollars are gone. There are no more measure E dollars. The state is not allocating us any money for facility maintenance issues like they had in the past. And to give you an example, we got kind of in the granular level, but you know, we have massive air conditioning units. And I'm sure you can understand, when we have 100-degree temperatures here, we've all lived here, it's important to have air conditioning. Well, each one of those units, and we have one that needs to be replaced, they're in excess of, they're over $1 million apiece. And we have multiple, so it is important that we maintain our facilities. We've got a commitment to athletics. This board made a commitment to, and we talked about that, our football stadium on the East Campus. That should have been included in Measure E. It wasn't. And it is woefully inadequate for our needs now, and particularly with students and other members of the community that have disabilities. It does not meet the needs. Well, we already know that when it comes back and we start to go out to bid on that, it's going to far exceed what this board allocated because of inflation. And we're going to stand by that and commit to that. So my other concern is that, and we don't know where the state is going to go with retirement costs. You know, there's been talk in the past of the end time or in-kind payments for pension costs could go away. That's what, $4 million? So that's a $4 million hit to the district's budget. So you know, when you look at what's been presented, if you back out the mandated board policy reserve, that drops our reserve down to $21 million. And that's without any additional hits to facilities and maintenance or anything. So there are issues that face us now and into the future. And I'm happy that we're proposing a balanced budget that addresses that, particularly in our facility and maintenance areas. And with that, the Board Finance Committee recommended adoption of this item.
Are there any other questions or comments from the board? I just want to compliment you and the chancellor getting all the state money we're supposed to get. I want to thank Antonio Dawn and Darren for all your work on the Budget Committee. So, the recommended action is that the Board of Trustees conducts a public hearing regarding the 2025-26 final budget for the Yosemite Community College District, to adopts the district's 2025-26 final budget as attached to the September 10, 2025 agenda, and authorize staff to prepare and file the necessary annual financial and budget reports with the required agencies. We already have a motion from trustee Garrett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Before we call the roll, trustee Gutierrez, your position?
Nay.
So with that, please, yes?
We just officially do a public hearing?
Okay.
Yeah, I know you did public comments, but a public hearing on this?
Okay, so how do I do that?
Just open up a public hearing.
Okay. Budget's open for public comments again. Anyone wishing to comment on the budget? Seeing none, we'll close it. Thank you for pointing that out. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Moving on. Next is Personnel, 6.2, YFA, YCCD, MOUS. Recommended action, that the Board of Trustees approves a memorandum of understanding agreements reached for the 2024-25 re-opener contract negotiations as attached to the September 10, 2025 agenda. Number one, to fully resolve the 2024-25 reopen negotiations, and two, to memorialize the MJC RSI compliance and off-cycle review RSI MOU. Anyone from the public want to comment on this? Seeing none, questions from the board? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I move for approval.
We will from trustee Davis. Do I have a second? Second, trustee Aguilar. Trustee Gutierrez?
Nay. Oh, sorry, aye.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, it passes. 6.3, seems we have a request for the Board of, for out-of-state travel. Apparently professors giving a presentation in Abu Dhabi, Arab Emirates. The recommended action is that the Board of Trustees approves the out-of-country travel for Modesto Junior College Full-Time Instructor of Child Development, Dr. Brandon Gilbert, to attend and present it to 2025 Bright Star International Conference Early Years Excellence in Abu Dhabi, United Arab Emirates, from November 10 to the 16th, 2025, as listed on the September 10 agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Student trustee?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Fine, the motion passes. As we said, 6.4 has been pulled. So we'll move on to item 7.1, Board Committee Reports. Trustee Garrett, you kind of made a presentation. Do you have anything to add?
I'm trying to get caught up here on my agenda, so bear with me here. Yeah, I know, pardon me. So we, thank you. We talked at the Board Finance Committee meeting on Monday. We got an update on our budget. As it stands right now, we're looking good at both of the colleges and at Central Services. There was no issue there. Again, we talked about in-depth, and I won't go over that again, on the budget and recommendation that we shared on approval. We talked about our FTSs, and we're seeing some great improvement there, particularly at Modesto Junior College. Although a lot of that, and President Sanders can correct me, but a lot of that is in online and distance ed, correct? Yeah. So that's where the, you know, we just to pass the RSI component with the Faculty Association, which is very critical, because if we're going to continue to expand in that area, that's going to be very critical with our accreditation. So it's great that we worked out, ironed out those details. And I know the Academic Senate was deeply involved in that as a 10-plus-one issue, so I want to thank them as well. And you know, we had a good discussion about a bond. Wasn't on the agenda, but we kind of morphed it into that, talking about other issues and how we don't want to be left behind on what we want to do now and into the future with career and technical education and technology. You know, I saw an allocation on the budget for IT TCO, and you know, there's going to come a point, Vice Chancellor Stewart, where we're going to have to start putting more money in there, because not only for our own needs, but particularly an emphasis on our students. We don't want to be left, we don't want our students to be left behind on technology. So we talked about that a little bit, and I think that pretty much covers it.
Thank you.
Right, Antonio?
Yep.
Okay, trustee Bakes is out of town, and she shared with me she had nothing to report from the Board Policy Committee or the Modesto Junior College Foundation. Dr. Davis, if you could handle the Columbia College Foundation and the Association of Stanislaus County School Boards' report?
Thank you. So the Community College Foundation will have a meeting next week, actually, but Amanda Stevens, executive director, did forward me some talking points that I'd like to share in advance of that meeting. One thing that I think is interesting is that for students to apply for scholarships, the foundation scholarships, they go through a software, it's a process. Well, the foundation is migrating that process over to award spring to align with MJC's foundation system. So I think that'll be helpful. Just want to make the board aware that faculty and classified professionals at Columbia, 45 in total, have automatic payments or deductions from their checks each month to contribute to the foundation for scholarships. And that's in addition to individual donations. And last year, $6,000 was awarded to the faculty scholarship and 1,500 awarded to the classified, and both of those were highest totals since 2022. The other is that anyone who would like to follow along in that giving can also go online to etcentral.yosemite.edu and designate scholarships that way. Let's see, Claim Jumper Day, this is when high school students, high school students are invited to come up and visit the college, is September 25. On to the Association of Stanislaus County School Boards. The only thing I have to report is that the date of the annual spring dinner has been established, that it will be April 22 this time around. That concludes my reports.
Very good. Okay, moving on to 8.1, we have a presentation.
Do you want me to talk about?
Oh, I, sorry. You know I got to do it to you at least once.
Once.
Trustee Garrett.
So I sit on the, our Valley Insurance Program Joint Powers Agency Board, and we met for a quarterly meeting in Merced on September 4, last Thursday. It's just an opportunity for us to see and get feedback on an update as far as our worker comp claims, our personal injury claims. And I'm not going to bore you with all the detail, but we're doing very good compliments to our risk management unit and all the work they're doing. We did get a brief update on, and this is, if you haven't been following the news, it's somewhat shocking. So there was a bill passed in the state legislature some time back about doing away with the statute of limitations on sexual abuse claims. And the legislator that sponsored it and pushed it through said, well, there's enough insurance money out there to pay for all of this. Well, actually, there's not. Los Angeles is now going out for a multi-billion-dollar bond just to pay for their claims. And LA Unified, if my recollection serves me correctly, has already paid out in excess of $1 billion. And they don't see any end in sight. And there's actually criminal street gangs that are involved in this, in this effort as fraud, and there's no way to stop it. The way the law was written, there's no way to stop it. So we haven't seen the real impact here yet, but who knows? We'll keep you updated, and that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to 8.1, presentation, MJC's 2023-28 Strategic Plan Progress Report, August 2025 Measurement Updates. I believe Ms. Grossi is going to make the report?
Yeah.
Welcome.
Hi.
I should say welcome back.
So like I said, I'm here to give the second in the series of five, I'll be here for the next couple of years too, but for the Strategic Plan Progress Report, to kind of see how we are doing measurement-wise on all the goals we said we would achieve, the strategies that we set out to accomplish, and that our institutions set standards. The way that this presentation is set up is that we have the, we're going to discuss the strategies, progress versus strategies first, and that'll be broken out by each goal. And then after that, we will go over the institutions set standards. So, nope, it doesn't. It doesn't do the things. Oh, is it on? It's not on, that's why. There we go. So Goal A is where we're going to start. That's focused on student success. And objectives in that realm are things like optimizing student success, focusing on equitable achievement, as well as ensuring that student learning produces a student that's ready for the workforce or transfer. So some of the areas where we are improving under Goal A include Strategy A21, where we are increasing professional development for creating and implementing an anti-racist culture on campus. An example of this is that over the past year, many MJC employees participated in Regina Steinbach Stroud's Academy that she put on for cultural literacy and social justice. There were many different topics that were covered, including things like cultivating open dialogue, equity-centered approaches to data interpretation, and inclusive classrooms. Another area where we are seeing improvement is increasing students' course success as well as persistence rates from fall to spring. For our baseline year of '22-'23, we were at 64.7%, and this past year, we did jump up to 69%. So that's exciting to see, always good news. When we look at areas of focus under Goal A, there are two major ones. The first is increasing the percentage of CTE students who complete nine or more CTE units in a year. This metric did decrease two percentage points from our baseline year of '22-'23 to 9.4%. Back in '22-'23, that was at 11.5. And then when we look at the other focus area of increasing students who complete both transfer math and English in the first year, there was also a slight decrease there. We went from 9.3% in '23-'24 to 8% this past year. When we look at Goal B, Goal B is focused on strengthening our college, so its objectives related to work environment and campus climate, ensuring effective planning and evaluation, and also achieving fiscal stability and long-term financial viability. An area where we are improving here is related to the college climate, especially as it relates to inclusion, diversity, equity, accessibility, and anti-racism. So these are the results from MJC's Spring 25 Employee Climate Survey. The numbers that you see in green and in orange are in comparison to the last time we had this survey, which was in Spring 2023. And so as you can see across the board, with the exception of individuals with disabilities, where it's kind of stable, there has been positive momentum towards more employees putting that they feel satisfied for the campus atmosphere for diversity, specifically in those areas. And then when we look at the student climate survey results from Spring 2024, which is the first time we gave this version of the student climate survey, you can see that students at MJC feel that the college is welcoming and supportive of students from all backgrounds, it's free of tensions, and it promotes an appreciation for cultural differences, relatively overwhelmingly with high 70s and 80%. A couple more areas that we are improving under Goal B. We have seen that there is a large 15 percentage point increase in the amount of employees that feel that MJC's leadership is making effective changes to help the institution be successful. Seeing that large of a percentage point over the past two years is exciting to see, especially because we have had a lot of stability in our executive team over the past two years. So it's kind of correlational there. And then when we look at prioritizing work established by the Idea Committee, we have added a fourth employee affinity group, the LGBTQ+ advocates. There was also a Black Excellence Celebration, and our Rise Up emoji and A2 Men students attended the Black Excellence Experience at Sacramento State. And once again, we did have that Cultural Literacy and Social Responsibility Academy. Some areas of focus for Goal B, the first is student learning outcomes assessment. We have decreased by 36.9 percentage points in the assessment completion rates for '24- '25 compared to our baseline year of '22-'23. However, MJC has acknowledged this issue and has in turn purchased a new assessment platform called Canvas Insights that allows faculty to assess as they grade. Previously, they would have to go back in at the end of the semester and then do these assessments, so now it's just all happening at once. And so we're predicting- And so we're predicting that this will resolve that issue and it'll kind of shoot back up. The second focus area under Goal B is maintaining an ongoing Strategic Enrollment Management Work Group. We did have a Strategic Enrollment Management Work Group that was established at MJC in 2324, and the intent was for that work group to be formalized within the governance structure. However, this work group last met in spring of 24. Goal C, the last goal that we have, is related to community partnerships and our experiences external to MJC. The objectives here are looking at our reputation as a college and also engaging collaboratively with those community groups. Some areas that we are improving is the number of community entities that we collaborate with. We do offer six apprenticeship programs and have apprenticeship partnerships with seven different employers throughout Stanislaus County. We also have twenty-one high schools with C cap agreements, and we collaborate with well over sixty community entities just in this past year. And some of those include active partnerships with the Manufacturers Council of the Central Valley, Beam Circulators, C Bio Collaborative, and Health Course Partners. Another area that we are improving is engaging with broad, long-term community development efforts. We actively engage with numerous of these, both at the county and regional levels. Some of those include Stanislaus 2030, the Stanislaus Cradle to Career Partnership, and the We Will K-16 Workforce and Educational Collaborative. Some focus areas for Goal C are increasing the number of high school graduates who see MJC as their first choice for college. The way that we measured this was looking at students that had graduated high school, that are age nineteen or younger, and that do not have a dual enrollment program on file. So we know they've definitely graduated, and they're most likely a recent graduate. And we can see that this did rise back to baseline levels. In 2223, this was at sixteen point two percent, and now we are at sixteen point six percent. So last year, we kind of sunk a little bit, but now we're going back up. And then when we look at the next area of increasing the percentage of students who apply to MJC and enroll the following semester, this has decreased by eight point two percentage points. In 2223, we were at forty-eight point three, and this past year, we were at forty point one percent. That is it for the Goals and Activities. I'm going to briefly run through the institutions set standards, and then I promise we're done.
You're doing fine.
Looking at Standard 1A of course success, here we're looking at increasing the number of students who complete courses by about twenty percent over the next five years. We have seen a really large increase over this past academic year specifically, starting with the baseline at sixty-six percent. We have jumped up this past year to seventy-two point nine percent, so a good six point nine percentage points there. When we look at award completion, the goal here is to increase the number of students who complete a degree or certificate by about twenty percent over the next five years, and we are hovering around the baseline level at nine point eight percent for award completion. When we look at UC and transfer rates, our goal here is to increase by thirty-five percent the number of students who transfer to a UC or CSU. CSUs are going to be in the blue, and UCs are in the orange. As you can see, we're pretty on par with what we were last year for the CSUs, however, we have dipped slightly in our UC transfers. And then when we look at average cumulative units, our goal here is to decrease that average number of students who have earned an associate degree to seventy-nine units. Our baseline here, we were pretty high up there, and then we were able to dip down to almost meeting that standard at eighty and eighty-one. We've managed to maintain that for ADTs, which are in blue, but we are starting to creep back up again for our local AAAS degrees, which are in orange. Finally, for Standard Four, which is CTE employment in the field of study, our goal is to increase that number to seventy-six percent. Last year, we had a moment where we definitely met that. We did regress slightly towards the mean, but it is hopeful that we will be on the up and up again, considering all of the efforts that we have been putting into CTE recently. When we look at equity gaps amongst those four standards, there, we can see in Standards One and Two that there weren't any equity gaps related to gender or age. However, equity gaps were found in ethnicity, specifically for course success. Those were found within our African-American and Hispanic student populations. And then when we look at CSU UC transfer, equity gaps were found within our African-American, Asian, and white student populations for this past year. Standards Two and Three, measurement still pending, the data for this comes from an external source, and so we're just kind of waiting on the state chancellor's office to give us access, so we can then do those calculations. Our last slide here is regional gaps. So here we are looking at those four metrics, but we're comparing them to our local community colleges. So we've got Delta in orange, and then Merced in green. We're going to start with course success rates. As you can see, for the most part, we've been pretty even with both Delta and Merced, especially this last year being at seventy-three percent compared to Delta at seventy-one and Merced at seventy-four. When we look at award completion, we are still waiting for Delta and Merced to insert their data into the state system, so we can compare award completion rates. However, if it maps on to what we've seen the past two years, we will once again still be on par with their award completion rates as well. When we look at student transferring, this is one of my favorite slides. You can see that MJC is doing pretty good above both Delta and Merced in terms of the number of students that we transfer to UCs and CSUs. Merced is a smaller college compared to us, but Delta is pretty comparable. So it is exciting to see that we are above Delta on that metric. Then when we look to average cumulative units by regional community college, we can see that, once again, we were slightly above MJC, we were slightly above Delta and Merced on this metric, and remember, we're trying to get to seventy-nine units, so above is not as good. But we have shrunk down to about even in the past 2324, and assuming that trend continues, we'll be on par with Delta and Merced on this metric this time as well. Lastly, for CTE field of study employment, we are pretty on par with Merced for this, and Delta is slightly higher there. So just a brief summary of all of the data I threw at you today. Some notable achievements, we have greatly increased our community collaboration and have continued to support community development efforts. We also have seen a fifteen percentage point increase in the perception of effective college decision-making. And because these results come from the Employee Climate Survey, and considering this survey was last administered in Spring 23, it is likely that the increase in stability, transparency, and consistency from our college exec team is influencing that positive momentum on these metrics. Additionally, FTS are reaching and exceeding our pre-pandemic levels, which is always exciting to see. We do also have a six point nine percentage point increase in our course completion rates. And finally, we are seeing an improving campus atmosphere when looking at atmosphere for diversity, both for our students and our employees. There are six recommended areas of focus. The first is looking at CTE students completing those nine or more units in their first year. The second is looking at transfer level math and English completion in first year, specifically for transfer and degree students. The third is looking at faculty engagement and SLO assessments, also formalizing that Strategic Enrollment Management Work Group into the governance structure, looking at applicants who enroll at MJC, and finally, increasing that number of first-time students who are nineteen or younger that enroll in our fall semester. And that is all I have. Do you guys have any questions?
Thank you. First of all, any questions from the public? Bring it back to the board, questions, comments?
So, on the page that says Standard 1B Award Completion, do you have? I see that on the other graphs, you had Delta and Merced on each side. Do we have one for Delta and Merced for that one?
We will. So we have it for 2223 and 2324. We're waiting on Delta and Merced to submit their data to the state, so that way we can pull that comparison.
This is kind of normal, ten percent?
In comparison to our region, yes.
What about other regions?
I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head.
The community college completion rates are just notoriously low across the entire country. It's one of the reform measures that we're always working on, we're always trying to increase that. It's the number of students that complete in a particular semester, a particular year, out of the total that are enrolled, and when you've got part-time students for long periods of time, it's hard for that number to get complete in terms of a percentage. And, but it's also, you know, it's something we need to pay attention to. How do we help more students get the courses they need, get through their curriculum, and complete, because then that's the gateway to higher-paying jobs, career opportunities, and everything else. So, there's a big moral imperative there. I was touched by that one, too.
But this one's amazing, so that's pretty good. I knew that that one would be the CTE employment in the field of study. I think that one's, I don't know why we went down a little bit, but still good, so hopefully we'll go up on that one again next time.
Other comments?
Yeah, well, I really want to thank you for this report and how you included regional colleges, and it gives us some context, you know. Maybe if there's like a state average, too, that might be helpful, but thank you for doing that, I really appreciate that. And also including gender, and you said there were no disparities there. I'd like to kind of dig into that a little deeper going forward. I'll talk with the chancellor on that. I would ask a question for you, Dr. Sanders. As you've seen these indicators and all, is there one that you're particularly proud of, that you'd like to share with us, and is there one that stands out as an area that the college is really going to focus?
One thing, and I just took a picture of it and sent it to one of our deans, I was having a conversation earlier, the increase in course percent success rate, we've gone from sixty-six to seventy-three percent essentially. That's huge, because you got to think that to move a percentage is a percentage of the number of people involved, and so to go from sixty-six percent success to seventy, this is thousands and thousands and thousands of additional students who have passed their courses. And it's an environment where our faculty continue to struggle with students coming in with less preparation, our prerequisite sequence, our preparations in math and English, we're doing that differently now with prerequisite articles that you may have seen today recently on test scores across the nation are down, and they're struggling with AI. So, in spite of all of that, we're seeing this massive increase in success, because the faculty are doing additional growth mindset activities, helping students feel that they can be successful, and I'm just really proud of that number. With trustee Aguilar, the drop in the CTE units completion, I don't know why that's happening, and what about the lower number of math and English completions within the first year of the transfer level math and English? So those are two things that are trigger points in funding for us, so that's a direct thing related to what Trevor was talking about earlier. But, you know, that's a really important issue for our administrative team. So yesterday morning, I was having a heart-to-heart with our dean team, and we went through those very details. We were talking about how can we develop scheduling patterns that are going to allow our students to progress more effectively, give them the right kind of guidance so they get math and English in the first year? And we've done a lot of work in guided pathways, but we haven't yet solved those problems. So yesterday's conversation was heart-to-heart, and we're focusing on those very things.
Any other questions, comments?
Yes. I was looking at the, I don't know what page it is on, it was Strategy B 1.2, and, sorry, I know that's kind of...
I'm going. B 1.2.
And I think it's honestly pretty good, just feeling included. I do see that there is quite a bit of dissatisfied. I've been talking with a lot of different students of different backgrounds, obviously with our LGBTQ plus students, or kind of deeply upset by recent actions, and then also our Native American students, and I've been also talking to other Native American members in the community, and just seeing how they perceive Columbia as well, mainly through the Claim Jumpers mascot, and also that we lack a land acknowledgement, and the initiatives that the CCC has been taking towards having a, I guess, a land acknowledgement that applies to all colleges. And I've been talking with students specifically from our IPAC, which is our Indigenous Student Run Club on campus, and how they want to push for the land acknowledgement to be stated at our events, our community events, and our committee meetings, and different clubs on campus. So I think that's an area to work on.
Yeah, I believe we just adopted a land acknowledgement, right? Yeah.
I can address that. We did adopt a land acknowledgement from Modesto Junior College. We shared it at graduation, our academic senate president shared that, had that shared at the first academic senate meeting of the year. We discussed it at college council, and we're going to be doing that on a regular basis at the beginning of each year, just to remind ourselves and remind one another of that.
If you want to know more about it, Jacob De La Rosa is the person to get in contact for that, he'll definitely help you out.
Yeah, yeah, I've been talking with him, and then also, just, there were complaints by students from the IPAC of the steps taken during commencement to find a speaker for the land acknowledgement. And so they were kind of wondering why it wasn't immediately reached out towards the, or they felt like there wasn't a reach out towards, I don't know if you could answer, but towards a tribe member.
We'll do better next time.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you very much. Moving right along, eight point one. My favorite professor, optimism one, you're up. Yosemite Faculty Association.
All right, all right, thanks for having me.
This is eight point two, by the way.
Chancellor, President Richards, and the rest of the Board of Trustees, I come mostly in gratitude and no asks here. Super happy that we found agreement on these MOUs, and that we can put that behind us, focus on RSI, and all of that, and so that you all can focus on, you know, taking care of CSJA. But I want to acknowledge like the people, like the hard work, hard workers, shout-outs, whatever, and I don't know why I'm so emotional when I'm so grateful, you know, that's ultimately what this is, but Shelley Akiona, most of you know her, she's a battle axe, right? She led the charge in this negotiation, and we couldn't have done it without her. Brian Green, now the past president, whom you know very well also, and who will also be stepping in as our lead negotiator for YFA moving forward. Hardev Dylan, YFA's treasurer, also a math professor here for decades and decades and decades. Derek White, YFA's VP at Columbia College, also a counselor, and he has many other roles. He's like a Renaissance man. And then Tom Nomoff, physics professor, who's surely the longest-standing member on our negotiations team, so super grateful for them. Grateful to the Board of Trustees for whatever direction you gave, whatever license you gave to Trevor, or whomever was making these final decisions, appreciate that. Also, the meetings that I had with you personally. Lena, I see at the gym now, like multiple times a week, we do not negotiate there, but we have little chats, and sometimes it's about like toning our triceps, and other times it's about, you know, district issues. Sorry to embarrass you, Lena. And then also, I cannot not say Trevor Stewart. This guy was at a Nine Inch Nails concert, and we were texting back and forth during negotiation, kind of like finalization. Am I saying too much, Trevor? Sorry. But like literally out of the state, and he said, you contact me anytime, let's get this done, right? Excuse me. Last but not least, Patrick Vettencourt. We sat in an Indian restaurant in Turlock, California for six hours rewriting that RSI MOU. Homeboy was on vacation, right? So this, he stepped up for the district and for YFA, all of us together to get this done. So thank you, thank you. Like, we all have like some heavy, strong players, and we got this done, so thank you.
Next, we'll move on to the Classified Senate Activity Reports. Columbia Community College Classified Senate, Glenn Mahusky.
Hello, my name is Bollock. Glenn Mahusky was not available today.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I'm the vice president of the Classified Senate. It's kind of a last minute, we didn't really have time to notify anybody.
Glad you're here, thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me. Thank you for having me. We only have a few updates. We've only met one time so far this semester. The big event is Claim Jumper Day, as Dr. Davis stated earlier, September 25th. We're really gearing up for that. As far as senate activities, we're still filling out the last of our committee assignments, and we've solicited feedback from our constituency or the hiring prioritization, sorry, classified hiring prioritization and the shared governance handbook. And that's about it. I'll keep it brief.
Thank you very much. Next, Modesto Junior College Classified Senate, Amanda Cannon.
Put on my official Take Me Seriously jacket.
Who would have taken you seriously, otherwise?
Well, you know, just got to look official. You can trust me. I wanted to thank you very much for the opportunity, Board of Trustees, Chancellor, and President. It's a little heavy, I'm not going to lie to you. Classified Senate is run on volunteers, so I'm going to tell you all the wonderful things that we've done since we last spoke. And I'm going to remind you that we volunteer to do that. There's not stipends, there's not extras. We volunteer because it matters. So we had, we manned welcome tables for the first two days, caring campus did. Got to speak to a lot of students, got to help a lot of people. It's one of the highlights of our, beginning of our semesters. We got to participate in Welcome Day. We got to participate in West Fest. We get to be out there. I'm a researcher. My job is behind my desk in the Morris Building. But volunteering for these opportunities is when I get to be with the students, and I get to have a hand in what they do. That's all I'm going to say. We volunteer.
Thank you. Okay, next, did Sabino leave? I know we've heard from him a few times. Okay.
Jeremy, could you comment on it?
No, I'm just, well, no, go ahead. Generally, we don't let, oh, Sabino, you are here. Come on up, your turn. Go ahead, make your comment.
Not to ask questions, but thank you. I think I see you guys more than my professors outside of the class. Thank you for being there, and thank you for just being a smiling face everywhere I go.
Very good. Sabino? It's okay.
Okay, well.
I thought you had left us, though.
Oh, no, never.
Okay.
I'm the one who locks the doors at the, I'm sorry, no, we're open 24 hours, basically.
There you go.
Okay. Good afternoon, Madame Chancellor Tran, President Richards, and the ladies and gentlemen trustees, general constituency, and student trustee. I never have acknowledged you, but I am doing tonight, okay? We appreciate that you're here.
Thank you.
In tonight's reports, I want to bring to your attention the following, for those who cannot be here because they had to work other extra jobs, such as, some of the custodians that had to go and work their custodian side jobs, you know, what else, to be able to pay for the most basic bills that they need to pay. That's something that they want me to mention here on the report, okay? Also, the class members would like to know if you have noticed how challenging it is to support a family on the salary of range seventeen, which is the lowest range for classified employees. The average cost for one bedroom apartment rental is between thirteen hundred and nineteen forty-eight dollars a month. According to the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, food prices are ten point sixty-five higher in twenty twenty-five versus twenty twenty-two, a two-point thirteen difference in value. The financial burden is a significant challenge for our employees or members. I want to ask, what will take for the district to be fair with our wages? We are not asking for a specific treatment, just a fair wage for the hard work we all do. And with this, I finish my report.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Accolade, stands the board, Professor Choi, nothing? Thank you very much. Okay, now let's move on to the Academic Senate Reports. Columbia College Academic Senate, Professor Andal.
Evening, trustees. Just a few items here. We're pleased to announce, while our senate support staff has retired from the district, we have a temporary replacement. And that's such a welcomed placement, because we're in a real busy time at the beginning of the year here. My understanding is we'll have a permanent replacement for the beginning of the spring semester. And thanks to Dr. Cooper for rushing that process along. You probably heard, I'm sure, that Kwame County, well, the mother lode suffered some fires. In fact, so many, you know, all these lightning strikes happened, they had so many, they didn't even name them. They just put numbers on them. So they're called the Lightning Complex. I would say the most significant was in Chinese Camp. As I, my understanding, it burned about fourteen thousand acres altogether with all the fires. And Chinese Camp, six-five fire, burned eight thousand acres, and along with many structures and a lot of historical buildings, which particularly affects me because I love history and I hate to see those structures disappear like that. So ninety-five structures destroyed, as I understand it. And the reason I bring that up is it's, I won't say it's common, but we're a pretty resilient community, including our students. You know, we have fires, we have power outages all the time. I've talked to many of you, and my cellphone blanks out because, you know, yeah, this was just the latest thing that both our students, staff, in fact, we just deal with it and move on. Couple of comments about the budget. First is about the DFAC. I just want to give a shout-out to Chancellor Stewart for having such a transparent and inclusive DFAC committee. I've appreciated that last year and going into this year. But along with the budget, Columbia obviously has got some concerns with some of the known facts about our budget, and particularly because we're a small college, right? So as we look at the statements that, well, careful about growing, because, you know, we're not being funded for that. We created forty FTS last year, Kwame, that we didn't get funded for, obviously. And so the reason that becomes maybe more of a concern at Columbia is we have fewer opportunities sometimes, right? If we're going to cancel this, for example, biology class, we may not have two or three others waiting for students to transfer over into, they might have to wait another semester. Some classes, maybe they have to wait more than a year, right? So just throwing that out there, you know, conversations, I think, need to take place about maybe the particular circumstances at Columbia, and if we're looking at, you know, freezing our growth, not offering classes or services at Columbia. That's it.
Very good. Thank you. Next, we have Vanessa Junior College Academic Senate President, Professor Flores. But not least.
Nope, not at all. I'm sure you missed me a whole bunch last month. Good evening, Board of Trustees and Dr. Tran. The Academic Senate had our first meeting last week, where we had the honor of starting the meeting with a reading of our newly adopted land acknowledgement, read by the program specialists of the Sierra Program, Jacob De La Rosa, with the support of two students in the program, Bianca Tenfingers and Jacob Paxia. We hope that the board will soon follow this example by implementing a land acknowledgement at the district level as well. Additionally, the Senate approved the 2025 to 2028 equity plan, and commended our research office and the Student Success and Equity Committee for their work in creating such a clear path forward to support our students equitably. Furthermore, faculty have been busy meeting the deadline to complete the required training for regular and substantive interaction, or RSI. The Senate currently has a call-out for faculty interested in serving as peer evaluators or peer reviewers. And a selection committee will make those appointments by this Friday. All of this work moves us closer to ensuring future success at our accreditation visit in the spring. A big shout-out to our newly appointed faculty accreditation co-chair, Aisha Sala, for the work she has done in supporting faculty through this process. The Senate would also like to thank Enrollment Services for their support of the faculty for roster certification last week. Bridget, one of the many dedicated classified employees who spoke tonight, hosted tech support for faculty who had any questions about the process of roster certification using self-service. You are appreciated, Bridget. Once again, although I have not yet received formal support from the Senate, as an individual faculty member, I support my classified colleagues in their request for equity. You not only have my support, but my respect as well. Thank you to my classified colleagues for all you do to support our students. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Moving on, Leadership Team Advisory Council, is President Dean Samantha McCarthy here. There she is. Welcome.
Good evening, board members, President Richards, and Chancellor Tran. Last month, I provided some information related to our mission statement, and I wanted to provide you an update on one of those items. After the board meeting last month, I did have a conversation with President Redwing. I did meet him in Columbia, and we had conversation and discussed the hiring process for his full-time secretary position, the executive assistant position in Columbia. And I appreciate his willingness to discuss perspective and collaborate on the solution. And we are looking forward to the state of the district and the opportunity for LTAC to be represented alongside the others constituency groups. We also received on Friday, thank UHR, our twenty-five, twenty-six contracts for the classified administrators. And then the educational administrators got their twenty-five, twenty-seven contracts. And this concludes the report. Thank you.
Moving on to eight point three, Presentations Update, Yosemite Community College District interim chancellor, Dr. Tran.
Hey, good evening, everyone. First, I didn't notice Luisa here, but I wanted to say congratulations on her retirement. I know Luisa very well, working at Columbia College. And what I remember is every time I walk in the library, it's always her warm smile and always willingness to help. So me personally will miss Luisa, and I do thank you for her time and dedication to Columbia College. The second item, I want to say thank you for the classified professional being here tonight, and also give us, me personally, an opportunity to meet new faces, and also get to know your name and how long you work here. And I'll be honest with you, as I sit here, it's difficult. I see that, Amanda. And times like this is hard, but I do want to say that I appreciate your thoughts, your commitment, and your professionalism to have this space that we can continue this dialogue. So I do want to say I appreciate that. And then in relating to that, I had the opportunity to attend many of the gatherings. You know, during first week, I attended West Fest, Welcome Day. I wasn't able to go to WOW. But I do know that when I had a conversation, because what happened is that at West Fest, as soon as that activity is done, truly, everybody hustle, get everything done, and move over to MJC East Campus. So that way, they're ready for the Welcome Day. But when you come on campus on Welcome Day, you wouldn't know that all the work was done behind the scene to get everything to the MJC East Campus, right? And then I talked to one of the classified professionals, say, "Yeah, we did it, and we got it in time, just 11:00 PM." And here, I'm thinking, wow, 11:00 PM, it's just like midnight, and then you're going to come back to, but guess what? You wouldn't even see the difference. So I do hear you. I do value you. Don't think that I know what's going on, what you go through. So, and I just want to say thank you to each and everyone who really contributed to the Welcome Week, WOW, West Fest, and also, you know, MJC, Welcome Day, East Campus, because your hard work does bring life to the campus. It's what our students say. I feel that I'm valued here. And I had fun. I really had fun, you know, getting to know MJC, getting to know the culture. And I hope to continue to attend those events. And I hope that you will support the district by attending the State of the District on September 24. And that concludes my report. Unfortunately, Dr. Redwood is out of the country, so he will not be giving his report tonight, but we...
Not unfortunate for him.
But we do have Dr. Sanders.
Good evening. In my report tonight, I want to focus on some numbers, math guy. Numbers, you ready? One hundred, the number of students that attended a registration rescue on the Saturday before the fall semester began. Seventeen hundred, the approximate number of students who came to the West Fest night the other day. Also, dozens of universities were there, and all of our schools were out hosting tables. And so many of our classified professionals, deans, administrative faculty were all there. MJC dance squad, and free food and drinks. One thousand four hundred and forty-two, the number of registered students at Welcome Day on Thursday. Each service hall was hosting tables in our schools, and it was a very warm day, so sweat equity is expended on behalf of our students. And once again, students received free food. One hundred and ten, this Friday, on the counselors' day, the high school counselors' day, you're invited to attend this Friday, the MSR, either at 8:30 breakfast time or at about noon. If you'd like to come and talk to the high school counselors, I know you had some questions about high schools in the remote areas, how they're feeling about MJC. The counselors are all here, learning all about the future. More numbers, one thousand, the number of high school students we expect to participate on Saturday, October 11th, for our 42nd Annual Hispanic Education Conference. Please mark your calendars. We'd love to have you there. Nineteen thousand eight hundred and ten, that's the number of unduplicated students registered out of yesterday. For comparison, about eleven thousand students enrolled at CSU Stanislaus, about ten thousand at UC Merced, and our fall number, unduplicated, about nineteen thousand eight hundred and ten. And then six thousand five hundred and forty-two is that total FTS count from amongst those nineteen thousand eight hundred and ten students as of the fall. Now, if you add all those numbers together, you get thirty thousand seven hundred and four. And that number has really no meaning, as Dawn said, but it's kind of fun. It does kind of illustrate that we do a lot of stuff. Now, if I want to give some numbers that you do add together that do have a meaning, I'll tell you about some dollar figures. These are dollar figures that come in through our grants activity. We recently hired a grants writer, grant writer, who's doing a fantastic job, Tamiya Ewing, and she's helping our faculty and staff and administrators determine the projects that we need and get the funding for them. So hold on to your hat. Eight hundred fifty thousand dollars for the chancellor's office rebuilding nursing infrastructure, forty-eight thousand dollars. North Valley Thrive Catalyst Grant, nine thousand dollars. Stanislaus Community Foundation Tupou Pomoja Fund, seventy-one thousand dollars. Apprenticeship Innovation Funding, twenty thousand dollars, a groundwork grant, thirty-seven thousand dollars for the Beam Bioeconomy Grant, one point seven million dollars from Trio, the Department of Education Grant, that's a nice big one, five hundred thousand dollars for the chancellor's office Industry Driven Regional Collaboratives Grant, an IDRC grant suggested by one of our community partners. Five hundred thou, oh yeah, and then thirty-five hundred dollars. And we got thirty-five hundred dollars in a grant from the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District for having a drone show at graduation instead of fireworks. So we didn't stink up the air. These total about three point two million dollars in received grants at MJC over the past six months or so. Fantastic. But that's not all. We soon expect to receive four hundred thousand dollars in an NSF for an Enabling Partnership to Increase Innovation EPIC grant. That's about three point six million dollars across all of those so far. We got that one in the queue, but we also have other ones in the field, applications out there. Top of the list, a four hundred thousand dollar NSF grant, three hundred thousand dollars, Jobs for the Future Access, twenty thousand dollars, Students Success Center for California Community Colleges, shortening commuting practice, one point three million dollars, an NSF subaward from Beam Circular, ten thousand dollars from Stanislaus Community Foundation, nine hundred thousand dollars on the Rising Scholars Network, fifteen thousand, Remus Foundation, one hundred and forty, fifty thousand for the NAGPRA. Mentioned concerns with the Native American students. We're really trying to dive into dealing with the artifacts that we have in a very professional way, and we're using that hundred fifty thousand dollar grant. Eight hundred two thousand dollars in Perkins funding, a biomaid subaward from UC Davis for a hundred and sixty-eight thousand. I'm not done yet. Civic Solutions Fund from Stanislaus Community Foundation, twenty thousand, another community foundation at fifty thousand, two hundred thousand dollars for bioeconomy, six hundred fifty-three thousand dollars from Beam for the Stanislaus Wet Lab, if we can be part of the new, you guys read the article, ten million dollars or so that they got in resources and to partner with them. We have a two point seven million dollar application in Title V as a Developing Hispanic Serving Institutions Grant, tell you about that one in a second, and another sixteen thousand dollars from Beam that we're requesting. So add all those together, and we're at seven point eight million dollars. And then you put everything together from what we've received and what we're looking for, and it's about ten million dollars in funding for the college. Now, our grants are being successful because we're closely aligning with our institutional priorities, strengthening industry and trades workforce pipelines. We're expanding healthcare pathways and nursing infrastructure. We're building regional capacity in bioeconomy and advanced manufacturing. And we're enhancing student success through instructional innovation and community partnerships. So as long as... So as long as we focus on those things, that's our core. And I want to leave you with one last request. Um, some of you have colleagues in the federal government, and of the dollars that I shared with you, $2.7 million is attached to the Title V Federal Department of Education Hispanic Serving Institutions Grant. It right now is on the bubble. And so if you have colleagues there, we are a Hispanic serving institution. The cut level is 25%. If 25% of your population is Hispanic, you qualify. And JC is about 56 to 57% Hispanic. So we're looking for those resources, and we'd ask for your support in seeking, you know, those to flow through from the federal government. Thank you very much for the time.
Moving on, eight point four, travel report. That's information. Did you have something to tell you? Go ahead.
You know, all that stuff is amazing, uh, good job on that. I just have one problem with your whole thing.
Yes, sir.
I love fireworks, so.
I know, I know, the smell of the fireworks in the air, yeah.
Thank you. I agree with you. Okay, travel report is uh, there for your information. Uh, do I have any, nine point one, do I have any requests for future board agenda items?
I, I don't know if it's an agenda item or not. Are, are we going to receive a, a presentation on the equity plans that we heard about this evening?
We can do that. We can do that.
Will we see that? And, you know, what are our goals there? Where, what are we, how are we gonna try to achieve?
We can do that. Trustee Gutierrez.
Uh, I'd like to move or have a plan to create a representative land acknowledgement for the uh, district or to use the um, Board of Governors for the CCC, approved land acknowledgement in future meetings or hearings through the district.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, let's start off with comments. Trustee Gutierrez, any comments?
Uh, yes. So, let's see. I've been, I recently spoke with our um, ASCC President, Samson Jenner. And we just kind of talked. Um, I think one of the things that stood out to me the most was how students and the community members, as she mentioned, uh, felt off about the mascot that Columbia has, the claim jumpers, and as it is related to the land taking from indigenous peoples. And it's interesting to hear that they have a negative view of our Columbia mascot. And um, they'll be having their regular events throughout the year. One of the new events that they're going to introduce is one centered around Valentine's. And uh, Samson, uh, Sam also was talking about how they feel the Manzanita dorms were kind of, I don't know, down. And they just want to try improving it using maybe their SGA budget. But um, yeah, I think that's about it.
Trustee Aguilar, anything? Trustee Garrett?
Well, I would like to follow up on, on the, the issue of the Columbia College mascot because I'm confused now. So maybe we can get some, some history on, on what that stands for and, and what it means. Because I have a, I mean, I understand the land and all that, but, but I'm confused how that mascot ties to that because I think it's a different story. Uh, so maybe to get clarification out there for everybody, we, we can get a, a little bit of a history on that. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Jesse Davis? Jesse Nikla? Nothing from me? Okay. The next regular meeting of the Board of Trustees will be held Wednesday, October 8th, 2025. The meeting is adjourned at 7:04.